Monday, October twenty-second, twenty eighteen, regular session in Anamosa. City Council and City Hall Council Chambers, one point oh roll call.
Rich.
Here.
Kay?
Here.
John?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
Cody?
Here.
Eddie?
Here.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point oh, motion to approve the minutes from the following meetings, October eighth, twenty eighteen, regular council meeting.
So moved.
First by Rich, second by John. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, carried. Four point oh, public hearings, none. Five point oh, presentations. Five point one, CDBG Downtown Revitalization Fund, Derek Lundson. JCED.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you for having me tonight. Should have one for everybody, you wanna pass those around? Just gonna talk to you about the CDBG Downtown Revitalization Fund. We've got guns in general, it's a little good there.
There we go.
I'm sure you're familiar with CDBG, 'cause I'm sure you've done water sewer project in Anamosa before. This is a spin-off of that project. A number of years ago, there were water and sewer pumps being returned, and instead of reallocating them back out, the state decided to put them in a fund called DTR, Downtown Revitalization. So what's that does, it helps downtown, the community fifty thousand or less, try to reinvigorate their downtown through a public-private partnership with building owners, the state, and the city in those instances. So that sheet there gives you some of the basic plot points of what CDBG DTR is. I'm gonna walk you through very minor up here, but then walk you through some examples of some of the more successful projects to give you an idea of what it can look like and how it can transform a downtown. Some of the main thing that we talked about is through HUD. It's for cities, five, fifty thousand dollars or less, and each state receives an annual allocation anywhere from three to five billion dollars. And that's obviously depending on what the federal government determines for HUD funding. The national objectives, you have to meet at least one of these, and it's benefit low-to-moderate-income families or people, slum and blight elimination, or there's an urgent need. So like I said, that gives you some more detail. It has to fit some of those categorization that has other elements too. Most of that's on that sheet. I'm gonna walk you through three examples. Belle Plaine, Woodbine, and Osceola. So Belle Plaine, Iowa, is over in this corner of the state. Population about twenty-five hundred. It's a main, happens to be a Main Street community. All three of the examples I'm doing tonight are, but this is for non-Main Street communities as well. So it's not a requirement to be a Main Street community. They had a four-point-one million dollar total project. The CDBG grant amount was eight-hundred thousand dollars. That has since changed. Now, the maximum amount you can get from a CDBG project is five-hundred thousand dollars. So it's a maximum amount you can get. So the rest of it, they leveraged the three-point-six million dollars, and they did thirty-six of forty-nine properties in their downtown. So this is a view before of Belle Plains downtown. That's a view after. So it shows some of the transformation that it can make. So this is an old shoe store. It stayed a shoe store when it changed. That's what I think probably happened in the fifties, early sixties. They changed it, brought it back to its historic look of what it would look like had it been newly built or built back in when it was first brought. That's the way it looks now, the way it looked historically. All that brick was underneath, it was brought back. They did get rid of the awnings, they put all the transom windows back in. They made the storefront original again, and had the original recess doors brought back in. That shoe store is still there, but now, because of this project, because of the investment by the private owner, the city and the state, it has a much more appealing look, and more people shop there now. So that's the only one I have from there. Woodbine and Belle Plaine happened quite a number of years ago. They were some of the first successful ones, I don't have as many pictures of them. Woodbine's across the state in the western Iowa, about fifteen hundred people. They did twenty-five of their facades. They leveraged seven-point-two-five million dollars, because they only got the half a million dollars. Everything else that they did locally, they did some internal stuff too. So as you can see here, this is the original, and this is what it turned out to be. Some of the buildings don't change very much, some of them have much greater impacts. That's, I'm sorry, that's a bad picture, but you can see the shingaling awning, a lot of that's, some of that cement board covering it up, the windows upstairs are plywooded over. And this is what it looks like now. On the first floor, there are offices, there are restaurant space. Upstairs, there are apartments. I think there's twelve apartments in that whole complex that goes from here all the way down to about here. Osceola's the one I'm most familiar with, 'cause that's where I came from. So I'm the one that actually did this project, a community of less than five thousand. They did it, and it costed one million dollars, they did the minimum amount. Four-hundred-eighty thousand dollars from CDBG. We leveraged the rest, at five-hundred-and-twenty thousand, we affected fourteen facades. I'm gonna show you some of the most dramatic changes. Some might say they'll change very much, some do. So this is an abstracting company. It stayed that way, but we brought back the original sort aspect of it. Now it looks like that. This is an eye doctor. We tore down this ten, and what we found, what we usually find is people cover stuff up, and they don't actually take anything down or tear it apart. That was the case with this one. And so we were able to bring back all that original detailing, which is similar to the building next door. Bring out an awning. Inside, I couldn't get a good picture of it because of the way it was set, but it also allowed us to do some handicap accessibility. Because there was a step originally here on the sidewalk, we built in a handicap ramp all the way inside, so now people with wheelchairs and stuff have easy access. They don't have to worry about trying to get up into the building. CDBG does allow for that as well. This is the public health building. That's the change it made there. Oh, that picture's a lot smaller, a big screen. You can see here, this is an old, this is an accounting firm. It's got the old shegel-shaped awning with a cloth awning over it, and then windows that are too large for what it was. This is what it looks like now. This used to be an old dressmaker shop. It was empty at the time of this. Because of the project, a new business is in there now. They redid the inside, CDBG redid the outside. That's what the outside looks like now, bringing back some of that historic look. So we keep things like old columns, bring back windows, save the old brick, trying to keep as much of that historic integrity as possible. One, so we meet the qualifications of the grant, but two, because we're also staying green. We're using Green Streets criteria, making sure that we're not sending a lot of this stuff to the landfill. And then this is a law building, it used to be an opera house. You can see it's got boarded upstairs windows. It's got whatever this crap is on the front. We can never quite figure out what kind of material that was, or what the vents did. But that's the way it looked before. This is the way it looks now. So the reason this was done is a lot of communities sit back and think, you know, we've done a lot of stuff, we've been doing well in our communities, but is there something more you can do? I don't know if you've heard, but recently, Anamosa went through the Downtown Exchange Program at the Downtown Resource Center. This is where people come in that haven't been here, or haven't been here for a while, and they secret shop your community. What do they like about it? What needs improving? Why do they think that? Anamosa didn't score that well. And a lot of it had to do with buildings. They don't look nice and/or they're empty. Now, you can chicken and egg it all day. You can say the buildings are in bad shape because they're empty, or they're empty because they're in bad shape. Either way, the story's still the same, it looks bad for Anamosa. All the people that came for that visit said they would never return to Anamosa. That should be a wake-up call to any community that says, we wanna progress, we wanna do more, we wanna have more people move here and live here and have businesses here. If people that came to break the town will come back, why would anybody else? CDBG, the Downtown Revitalization Fund, has been a way for communities to do that and revitalize themselves. West Union did it a number of years ago. Everybody's familiar with West Union, it's up in the northeast corner of the state. They did a three-year project, ten million dollars. That wasn't just facades, they did some streetscape as well. But since that project, they've had a new hospital, CEO moved to town, new doctors, new teachers. They've had five new businesses start and none close. Osceola, all of the buildings that were empty are now filled, and they're all contributing. Some of the ones that weren't up to speed, and I don't have pictures, like you said, of all of them, those have now been updated even more. A lot of them now have people living up above to try to help maintain income for the first floor, as well as bring people downtown, living downtown. Because you can do almost anything downtown, except your job, is what we like to tell people. And so that's pretty much the same here. You can get groceries downtown, you can get gas downtown, you can eat downtown. There's entertainment downtown with Starlight. There's a lot of things you can do if you have the people downtown. And the CDBG DTR project gets people encouraged into coming downtown and spending that money, living downtown, encourages business, all those economic drivers that sees it as a success. So some of the project details, some of them should be on that sheet, so some of this will be a repeat, is that it's a five-hundred thousand dollar maximum from the state. Two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is required at minimum from the applicant. The city has to be the applicant, they have to be a funding partner in this. And it can't be in kind, it's actually some form of cash. Most cities use TIF. There's a few that have used others, but TIF is primarily the best way to use it, because it's something the cities understand pretty well, and it's proven. The rest of it comes from the private owners or other entities. So there are some grants you can couple along with this. There are some other private owner equity groups that will do, like angel investors. But the building owners are the ones that have to take part in this. So in this one, this is a law building. It was owned by the lawyers that own that firm. They put in twenty-five percent of the cost. The city put in twenty-five percent, and the state put in fifty percent. Slum and blight survey of a district is required. The easiest one tends to meet the national objective, is slum and blight remediation. And in any downtown that has a lot of vacancies especially, slum and blight tends to be the easiest to remediate, because you have a lot of. What's done is the survey's done by someone like EZCOG. They can come in, they take the pictures, they do the survey. And as long as you have at least twenty-five percent of an area that's considered slum and blight, the city is eligible for this program. The city passes a resolution that says this is a slum and blight area, and that we're gonna work to improve it. And then you report on all previous relatively recent activities undertaken in the community to try to improve your downtown. And then develop a plan for the monies. How they're gonna be expended, what you're gonna do, and a few forward-looking plan. So it's a little bit of, here's what we've done, this is what we're gonna do now, and here's how this is gonna continue through to the future. A lot of towns mainly put for that future thing, that when you put money into a building, or buildings downtown, to bring them up to a certain level, any other building on that block or in that downtown that didn't come along with you is gonna be dragged down. They're gonna have an urge to bring their building back up, whether they're trying to sell it, whether they have a building in, a business in it. They're gonna try to be active and, for lack of a better phrase, keep up with the Joneses. Because it's a very stark statement. When you have something that looks like this, that goes to like this, these sorts of things start to stand out more. And so a lot of that is the visual appeal of what cities do, what businesses and building owners need to have happen. So project development, most projects complete improvements on roughly twelve to seventeen buildings. To get the five-hundred thousand dollars, ten buildings is required, because you're a population threshold of five thousand or above. I think it's three thousand or less, you have a little bit different of a percentage. But in Anamosa, it would be at least ten to get the five-hundred thousand dollars. Most people hit somewhere in that twelve to fifteen range. Work with an experienced CDBG grant writer administrator. EZCOG does have one. I've done this project in two different towns as well, so I can help share some of that burden with you. Involve an architect with experience in historic preservation. This is a requirement, because you do have to meet the federal standards, the section one oh six reviews. Because this is technically a historic project you're revitalizing, not tearing down a building new. This is something that requires an architect with that type of experience that knows the Secretary of Interior standards. And then develop realistic cost estimates on a project budget. Obviously, those numbers can change. What you submit and what you end up getting bid back, sometimes are gonna be different. The state does work with you to make sure that if you're a little off-base, you can work with owners to try to reduce cost, or to figure out a way to add more money in. So it is a project that does have a little bit of give to it, but the better you are off upfront, getting those bids and estimates in, and then tacking on some contingency, the more realistic they're gonna be, and the less you're gonna have to change on the backside. So you need to obtain commitments from property owners. So only the building owner is eligible to do such a thing. Businesses may wanna do all this great upgrading, that's fantastic. It's a requirement of a building owner in order to do this. And they sign off on paperwork that says they're gonna be part of this. They understand the great requirements, that they are gonna fall under one general contractor. They can't say, oh, Councilman Smith owns a building, he's gonna go out there and get his own contractor and do X, Y, and Z, and get the state to pay for it. Goes under one architect, one general contractor. And that way, everybody's getting the same work, and the same apples-to-apples type of comparison for the bids. You also can't do other work limitations, while you have to do this or you're not getting the job. You can't do that, it has to be straight bid process. And it's Davis Bacon wage rates. So for those of you who don't know, that's prevailing wage. Whatever the prevailing wage is, that's what you have to pay. I don't know what it's like in eastern Iowa, but in southern Iowa, no one ever filled it out to say what prevailing wage was, so we had to pay Des Moines rates all the time. Hopefully, it's filled out in this county, so you don't have to pay Cedar Rapids or Iowa City rates. But that's something EZCOG can help you with, which is why having an experienced grant administrator is so key. They also come around and do wage surveys of all the people doing subcontracting work, so they're aware of what it is. The goal is to try to address those buildings in the most need. So buildings that have a lot of, whether it's falling down, or they have a lot of deferred maintenance, those tend to be the high priority ones. Not to say that a building that's in pretty decent shape that couldn't use a little beautification isn't allowed, because they are. The goal is, from the state's perspective, that they want a big visual power of an impact. They want people to drive through and see before, and then see the after, and just be, have that wow factor. So they want to be as visually compelling as possible, which is usually why these buildings are the ones that are high priority for them. White elephants, corner buildings, any of those, it's gonna take up a lot more real estate. And then you obtain the match from building owners and other sources, and then the city government as well. That's all a requirement to be part of this program. And the reason I bring it up is, after having read the report from the secret shoppers, as well as some of the reports that have been done over the last twenty years, it seems one of the things that comes up often is that there's a lot of buildings that could use some loving. And that they could use that TLC to be better off. And you know it. I mean, if you walk around town, you may be familiar with it, because you've been here a long time. But I know when I came to town, it was easy to spot, oh, that building's empty, that building needs some work. The cornice is falling off that building. All things you may take for granted, people that come to town that aren't here all the time, they don't take it for granted. They wanna go places they feel safe, and they feel comfortable, and that look nice. Seventy percent of all people that walk through a business's door come in based on curb appeal. If that looks like a nice place, I'm going to stop there and go in. If it doesn't, they won't do it. And this is a curb appeal type of program. The application timeline, it looks like as of right now, it's gonna be due sometime in April, which means it's kind of a tight timeframe. Not impossible to do, if it's something you want to move forward on in the next couple of months. It's something we can easily put the application together. Awards are usually made sometime in the summer. What that means is, no project would start in construction until sometime in twenty-twenty. Because you have to have time with the architect to do the drawings, you have to have time for it to be approved by the state, and then go out to bid. So you'd probably bid sometime in winter of twenty-nineteen, early twenty-twenty, and then you can start as early as spring of twenty-twenty. And then most projects are completed within two and a half to three years. Depending on, I know weather's been a big thing, especially this year with all the rain. You can get...
Extension.
Extension, thank you. Can't even think of it. You can get an extension, but usually there's ways you can jump it around, so you can do some interior work or some exterior work. Some things like masonry can be done in the rain, it doesn't matter. So you just try to figure out how you wanna do it. A couple of things, I think it might talk about it on a sheet, but if it doesn't. The building facade, the eight, first eighteen inches of the building from the exterior, eighteen inches in, the building owner will sign an easement with the city. And the city owns that facade for the next, usually five to seven years. And that's because if someone suddenly decides not to take care of it anymore, you have a method to go after him and say, hey, you own this, you need to fix it, we helped pay for this. So you have that leverage in order to do things, and you go to the state as well. Anybody that goes in and changes anything that was done, you can go to the state and say, hey, they didn't follow through, they didn't look at this. Because all these easements are recorded at the county. So anytime a building changes hands, the easement goes with it, until that seven years is, five to seven years is up. And anybody that takes away any of that work that's been done, they owe the state back the money, as well as the city back the money. That is not something that's just lost in the wind. There are people that have done that in the past. They've had to pay back both the state and the city that applied. So it's a less of a risk than it would be if you had to just assume that it was going to be fine for the five to seven years. Are there any questions on either that sheet or what I've said? I know I went over it awful fast, it's a big program, but it's similar to some of the other CDBG stuff that you've done, just a different type of long-term goal.
I have a question.
Yes.
So the five-hundred thousand gets divided amongst ten buildings?
No, the way it works is that, well technically, yes. The city gets the five-hundred thousand dollars. It's a reimbursable grant, just like all CDBGs are. And it goes out, it gets bundled out. So pretty much fifty percent of every building project. So some people may have a hundred thousand dollar repair that they're doing. They'd get potentially fifty thousand dollars of it. Someone else may have a twenty, they would get ten percent of it. So it's proportional, it's fifty percent of their building project.
Okay, that was my next question, is how it gets proportioned out.
Yep, and that's the easiest way to do it. Because everybody pays a twenty for five percent of their building, rather than twenty-five percent of the whole project. I'm interested in Anamosa, some of the things that can be done now. The building and inventory survey, that's something that Anamosa Hometown Pride has already started doing for you. If you're interested in it, that way you have the information. Which buildings need some work, and what type of work it needs. Slum and blight survey, like you said, this is something I've done in the past. EZCOG can help you with it as well. Just going around, getting the pictures of the building, seeing what level of, I think it's poor, fair, good, and excellent, are the four categories, slum and blight. Based on what I've seen from what we've been doing on the building and inventory survey, there's probably twenty-five percent that you've blighted in your downtown district, slum and blight. Work with EZCOG, I talked to them to see, and I said, if the city's interested, that'll be something that the city and EZCOG has. We can all set up a meeting, and they can come over. An architect would not be hired right away, but it's something that you wanna be thinking about. There are a number of them in the state that do the CDBG projects, pretty much religiously, in their quality purpose. And then, like I said, you do the city council slum and blight resolution. If you move forward and decide there's anything there, you figure out how you're gonna finance it. Like I said, most cities tend to use TIF, because it tends to be the easiest financing mechanism for you. And then finally, once all that's done, you have a public hearing to see if there was anything else that might come up, or that people are thinking about, or what needs to happen. That's a requirement of the grant regardless. In cities, anytime you use money, you know that you have a public hearing. But this is usually the last step, once all the other boxes are checked. Didn't show up very well. Questions for me?
I do have one. Do you have to have a commitment from ten building owners before you submit the application? Or do you do that after the fact?
Ideally, the stronger the application to start, the easier it is. So I, the towns we've done, I've always encouraged people to have the minimum when they submit it. And that usually is documented, says, yes, I understand that the city is applying for this. I know that my twenty-five percent would be approximately this amount. I'm interested in signing on that I'm going to be part of this project. They can still back out after that point. If that happens, so say you start with ten, and it ends up being eight, you would just not get the five-hundred thousand. That's what happened in Osceola. We started, at the time it was fifteen. We started with fifteen, we ended with fourteen, so we only got the four-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. So you still get money based on that, if you have enough density to make it count. Something other towns have done too, to be a little more visually impactful, is they split their downtown. Attoma has split their downtown three or four times, and they've taken advantage of it every couple of years. Macocata just got awarded this earlier this year. They're gonna do the west side of their downtown one year, and then the east side of their downtown another year. And that's what I would encourage you all to do too. Osceola did just fourteen, ran the buildings around the square. And then when they wanted to go back and try it again, they determined that there wasn't enough slum and blight left, because they had pocketed it all over the downtown. So strategically placing how your downtown would work, based on how many building owners might be interested, is an easy way to sort of make yourself competitive for a second round later on. Any other questions for me? I know, like I said, it's a lot of information.
What's the average, like, do most people, like, if you got ten on board, is it common for some to drop off? Or, like, could you do twelve, and then if two, you still have ten?
Yeah, so I mean, like I said, a lot of towns, shooting anywhere from twelve to seventeen, you saw Belle Plaine and Woodbine both had a nineteen to twenty. So it really just depends on the town and how motivated the people are. Some of it depends on the match as well. Some cities have picked up more than that. So two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is a minimum. I think one town did as much as forty percent, so then they had more building owners stay involved, because their percentage was less. So it kinda depends on the numbers. It also depends on how realistic your estimates are. One town had to go out and re-bid the whole thing, because they had estimates based on whatever the architect said, but then everything came in twice as high. So then they had to start back over and go see why the bids were so much higher than what everything else was. So some of those things can be fixed upfront, something, as you all know, just kinda happens with rain or whatever. You have to fix the delays, and figure out when things are due, and what exactly they're doing. I know in Corning, where I did this project, we had a shingle-shaped awning, and we're like, oh, well, we'll tear it off and re-point the brick under it. Well, at some point, somebody tore out all the second-level brick and just put a shingle-shaped awning up, so there's literally no brick. So anything like that that happens, a surprise during construction, there, you have alternates. You can add alternates back into a project. What tends to happen is the owner pays for a hundred percent of those changes, but it's still the, usually the twenty-five split on everything else. And they just sign a document that says, yes, we understand that this is something else that happened. There's no money for it, and we pay for it. If someone drops out, then that money might be able to be reallocated. But like, it's mainly just how well you plan upfront, to see how many you keep. I would say it might be common for one to drop out, but to have several, I would say...
Are they just assessed on their taxes? Is that how the building owner repays this?
The, what do you mean repays? The building owner pays directly in. So say they need to pay in ten thousand dollars.
They need to...
They would cut a check to the city.
They need to pony up the cash right away.
Not right away, but what most people tend to do is a payment system. That way, they start when the project starts, and by the time it's done, they've paid all the way through. That way, for any reason, if they miss in the middle, oh, well, sorry, your building's torn up, but you haven't been paying. So it's a little more of an incentive to make sure people pay along the way.
So the problem I would, the one problem I could foresee then is, they say, yeah, we're gonna do it.[1605.05] So the problem I would, I, the one problem I could foresee then is, they say, yeah, we're gonna do it, then the architect comes in, says, here's what it's gonna cost you. And they say, well, that's a little bit more than I want to spend, and that's why some people are backing out.
That's why, yeah, if you work with an architect early on, that tends to limit that, um, who was it? Maybe it was Elkhorn, I think Elkhorn had that problem, they brought the architect in after they'd gotten the funds, but then the funds didn't go as far. And Osceola, we brought it in ahead of time, we've got, we did a base guess, here's what it's gonna be, we added, I think, fifteen percent, because we knew it'd be an extra year before we got to it. And we were in then, all except for one of the projects, I think, within five thousand dollars of what the, the cost was. So that, like I said, as long as you plan right, plan early, there's ways to combat that.
Do you find that sometimes getting local lenders involved to help with the home, the building owners? Because if, I know that there are lenders in the area that are doing the brownstone, graystone, like, there's some funding out there for revitalization.
Yep.
So if they were willing to get involved in something like this, you're only talking twenty-five percent, right? From the building owner?
Generally. Yeah, at a, at a max.
I mean, compared to the property value that building's gonna be when it's done?
Generally, and a lot of banks play along.
That's a pretty good, I was gonna say, that to me, as a lender, would be a pretty good.
I mean, a lot of towns have a low interest loan type of program for facades anyway, and they usually just take away the limit for anybody involved in a project like this. Because they know that the state and the city's money is guaranteed, so there's less of a risk to them.
Right.
Yeah, the, the only problem would be like, when you said you took off the facade and the brick was gone, now you've got, it, it's kind of like tearing apart your, your kitchen or whatever, you, all of a sudden, once you start tearing apart, now we've got this cost, and this cost, and this cost, that you weren't expecting.
And that happens on average at least once per community. I mean, it's just one of those things without good historic pictures and good documentation of what previous owners did, and you can't tear it off ahead of time to see. So, but yeah, in both towns I've been in, this happened, I think it happened in Woodbine, I know it happened at least once in West Union, I think it happened twice in Bell Plain. But, and that's where having the banks on board is helpful, because usually they have some way to help at least get some money in the system, so that people have a little bit longer. What happened in Osceola was, they were almost done paying when we found it, I think they'd paid six of their eight payments. And then we realized, based on the math, they were gonna have to pay at least three, three to five more payments. So we extended their payment out beyond that eight, because of the extra time, so they had more time to pay it back, and they were able to do so.
How many awards do they have per year?
Depends on their allocation, this, they only award half a million dol- a minute, maximum half a million, I mean, and I'd usually get about three, well, some of that goes to water sewers. So this one probably gets about, I don't know. One, uh, like, a billion or something like that of it. So you, they can do up to, sometimes it'd be between ten and twenty. But then there's towns, you know, like Oxford Ju- Oxford Junction went after it, they're a lot lower, so they wouldn't get the half million. So it just kind of depends on the size of the towns that apply, and how competitive their application is.
This is good stuff.
Thank you. If you ever have any questions, you can always come ask me as well. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Derek.
So at this point, we need to find ten property owners to get involved.
That, that would be kind of the next step, I think, uh, obviously, there's no official motion or anything, but if, if, there's a general consensus that this is a, a positive step to take, and something that the city wants to invest in, it makes it easier to kind of take the lead from the city, so that those business owners, you know, you know that this is a serious, um, interest from the council.
Derek, I have a question for you. Was there a, a community that you have dealt with, dealt with, that has had, um, like, a higher percent of absentee owners?
Yeah. Any more, all of them have a high percentage of absentee owners, it seems like, so. I, I mean, your, your best shot is, if you have someone that knows them, you contact them. And you send letters out that shows something that your cog can do, send letters to all the proprietors, say, hey, this is what we're looking at doing, are you interested? Or have, if you want, you're more than welcome to all the public meetings, and EZ cog would probably suggest that. Whether you come back, or call in, or whatever you want to do, try to get them involved. I would say it's probably, between all the towns that I know of and that I've been involved in, it's about fifty-fifty split. Some will do it, because they're like, oh crap, well, now my building can be useful, better than falling down. And some are like, nope, I'm just using it for tax shelter anyway, so it doesn't matter. So it, it just kind of depends, and that's why, if you have a rough idea of where all your locally interested parties are, that helps you divide that downtown a little better, and then maybe target a couple specific absentee owners that might be more amenable to such.
Great.
Any more questions for Derek? We'll move on then, six point O proclamation is none. Council action item, seven point O, community betterment, seven point one. Discussion on possible action on third reading of ordinance amending chapter fifty-three of the city code to prescribe new regulations for lawn maintenance and impose penalties for violations thereof.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Betty, second by Rich. And it's a roll vote.
Kay.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Seven point two, discussion on possible action on third reading of ordinance prohibiting smoking and the use of tobacco and nicotine products and electronic smoking devices in public parks.
Move to approve.
First by Rich. Was that second by John?
Mm-hmm.
And this too is a roll vote.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
Seven point three, discussion on possible action regarding request from, for LMI funds by Charlotte Shekel for rehabilitation of property located at one oh one and a half East Main Street.
Did we hear from EZ cog on this?
I, I, um, mistake on my part, I didn't, uh, call Tracy, uh, Okibok, uh, early enough, and she had another commitment tonight. Um, but I did talk more with her about this, and, uh, basically, from their end, um, they, they did feel the, their grant loan cash flow well enough with the other, basically loan from us, um. So that was one, one, uh,
They-
So that, that's kind of their, their reason for asking us to, for get part of that, but then the other, um, I know the other question was if they had any deadline requirements, and they said it, essentially, they don't, I mean, they don't have an agreement in place yet, they haven't approved anything. Um, but, uh, they do provide a timeline for some projects, and that would be likely in this project, um. The ac- exact timeline would just depend on the, the complete scope of the project, and they haven't determined that yet, so, um.
And I'm sorry, did you say they felt like it did cash flow, or didn't?
With, with, with our, with, with the money being owed to us, it didn't cash flow.
With ours. Didn't, okay.
Just because, basically, the way they look at it is, there, some of their money would go, essentially go back to pay us, and wouldn't cover the full costs of the project.
They'd still be sitting where they are.
So, that's my understanding of where they're coming from, uh, from the LMI perspective, I mean, it's, it's our option to do it, that, I mean,
And did we feel like there was a place to get m- money last time we met? Like, how, should we discuss that the seventy-five hundred for the city was gonna come from?
The, the, the city has the option to use LMI funds, which are reserved, set aside from prior TIF projects.
Correct.
We have that option, um.
And did we get a printout of what the rules for that are?
I, I don't have a printout on the rules, but, um, essentially, if it's going to benefit, uh, people who meet that definition, if their income's with, I don't know the specifics in Alford Jones County.
Okay.
Um, essentially, our, our agreement with, if we provide those funds, we'd have an agreement with Charlotte saying that her tenants have to meet that definition.
For a certain period of time, correct? I mean, like, after ten years, or whatever?
Yeah, it, it's not forever, I don't know exactly.
Right.
To define that, I still have the housing trust authority, um, our agreement requires that as well, that it's low moderate income, and it's eighty percent of the median income. And that's a requirement as long as she's paying back to us. So she does that in one year, it can be done after that, it's ten years, whatever it is.
Okay.
It has to stay that until we're paying that. Because it, with state federal money, it has to meet those requirements.
I was thinking there were some requirements, I just-
Yep.
And that's where it would benefit, uh, if we were to use those funds, that we can kind of use their check on that, so that we don't have to verify that it's being used.
Yeah, it's something that has to be verified to us every year regardless.
I think if they improve downtown, this gentleman talked about anything with putting new windows, getting them looking better, fixing it up.
I know.
Seems like it'd start to improve our city from there, and then maybe go with this other, and get some more people that do the same thing.
You know, and that brings up another question, in a case like this, if the city and EZ cog were now to help Charlotte, and then we were come twenty twenty to do this other revitalization, that is a building where it has two separate owners. How does three?
Three.
Yeah.
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 Three separate owners.
You could only do work on the ones that agreed to it, so, if Charlotte agreed to it, and then if you didn't, you could only do work that impacted her part of it. Um, how the state might do that, I don't know if they view it as a whole building or not, so you might have ten and a third buildings. That's a question that I don't think any other towns run into, because I don't think they allow it. A lot of towns don't allow, uh, hodgepodge of ownership, or they're getting away from it. Uh, or the ones that do, just don't go into these types of projects, since you never know what you'll run into.
Correct.
Uh, but it would be eligible.
So Derek, does EZ cog have, like, certain, in order to go through with this for Charlotte, is there a timeframe, she has to have it done by a certain time, there's, like, things like that?
Part of that was in her application, I think, and, because I'm trying to remember what comment I had, I think it was eight months. And so I think that would probably be the application, or the timeframe, might be a month or two leeway in there, but, so eight months from the award date to completion. But yeah, there's a, there's a timeline, it's on this one, I know. And that was discussed before I started, so some of the discussions I'm not as aware of, but I do know there's a timeline.
And now with winter coming, it'd be nice to get going, at least get the windows in, and I don't know if the roof could still be possible this fall, but, what the, whoever you would hire to do it, where they're at, you know, if that can be done in the winter, or, so that would, it'll be a little longer. At least you could get the windows in, the heat, get everything electrical done, that, and then she could work on that, and then get, you know, whenever the roof would be possible, get it done. I don't know Charlotte long enough, if she's gonna do it, as of that.
Well, and I've gone back and forth with the city's responsibility and private building owners and paying and helping, and helping them pay, to the fact that the public also, on the flip side, says, why does the city let our downtown look the way it does, why doesn't the city ever do anything, you know what I mean? So, um, it's, yeah, I get it.
Derek, can you talk about completion timeframe on, on this project? Uh, you know, you, eight months, that's, the project is completely finished.
Only what the funds requested from the housing trust fund. So only the work that she put in scope of the application for us, it would have to be complete. So anything else she did, or whatever, she almost got money or grants or whatnot, we don't hold her, it's, it's not the entire project for us, it's just who we pay.
As part of your, your loan or whatever, when does her repayment schedule start with you guys?
Well, it says for sure in the contract, but I think it's, so, they must get done, and that's where I think the leeway comes in, I think it'll be a month or two to get it leased out and stuff, and then it would start automatically upon that deadline, either getting someone in there, or so long after completion of the project, and that's usually worked out as part of the contract. But, so it differs per the project. But it's usually a pretty quick turnaround, because obviously, if it's empty, then it'll pop anyway.
Charlotte, what was the scope of your request to the EZ cog?
Ten thousand dollars.
I know, I know you were, I know what the, I know you're covering the roof, and then what else, what other aspects of the building?
In my initial application, I did not ask for the what EZ cog offered to contribute the thirty-five thousand, interest free. Uh, I'll have to pay the thirty-five thousand back. The ten thousand that I asked for, I give it as a, what they call forgivable grant, which if I do, as directed by law, it's uh, read out to low income housing over a period of time, that loan is forgiven, so it ends up being a grant. It will cover the electrical work that needs to be done, the windows that need to be replaced, plumbing that needs to be done, floor coverings that need to be put in also, um.
Can you step up to the podium while you're talking?
There's gonna be somebody that's gonna wanna hear you on the video.
It would cover the electrical work, plumbing that needs to be done, the windows that all need to be replaced, except for one, um, probably will match the rest of them, but there's one that actually works, and it can open, and it's not broken. Um, floor coverings that need to be done, painting that needs to be done, uh, doors need to be replaced, uh, most of the inside doors have been, uh, destroyed practically, the frame, everything looks like somebody just took a battery and ran it in, and broke into the building. So that's what's ten thousand dollars is covered mainly.
So what is your timeframe, you, do you think, to get somebody actually living into that, into your apartments?
Um, one of the apartments is not as bad as, as the other ones. The front apartment is, uh, could probably be fixed up if I had heat in the building where I could work, uh, it's getting cold. Uh, that building, the electrical work has been upgraded. So I could, um, I need to get the space meters removed, that are in there, because they're no longer any good. Um, been sitting empty for seven years, they have corroded inside, so instead of replacing that, I'm going to do it with electrical heat, so that the resident only has to pay one utility bill outside of the water, rather than gas and electric. Because even if they have gas in there, and they turn it, have it turned off, or they don't use it during the summer, they're still paying a meter rate during the summertime. So this way, they use electricity all year round, but it would go down during the summer, because they're not keeping the building. There's no way I can put central air in the building, uh, so it'd have to be, if they wanted, air conditioning would have to be window air conditioner in the building, for each unit. Probably, it would take me two to three months to get the first one done. I'm looking for local, um, help, uh, people that need, who are capable of doing the work, but need the extra income. But I am also providing aid to people who might be living there afterwards, because of, of low income. And I know there are several people in the area that work minimum wage jobs, and can do some of the work that needs to be done, like replace the new windows. Probably need to replace the, electrical work, I would have a person, um, who is licensed electrician to do that. The floor covering, I would have, uh, local company come in and do the request, home decorating.
Charlotte, we're kind of, Charlotte, we're bouncing around here, and I'm starting to get confused with some of the numbers, so. There could be, there's a possible ten thousand dollar forgivable loan that's coming from the low income side of it.
Have you heard of EZ cog?
You talked about a thirty-five thousand dollar loan, or?
Yeah, okay. Originally, when I asked to get the building, I was told that I needed to have proof that I had financed, so that I could take care of the building. So I went out and got an open line of credit. When I applied for the loan from EZ cog, one of the things in there, it stated what were my resources that I had to do the repairs on the building. And I put in there that I had to open a credit line at a bank, uh, whatever the interest was at the time I took out the money, that is what I would be paying interest on it. EZ cog, on its own, came up with the fact that they would give me the thirty-five thousand dollar loan, interest free, which I would ha- I still have to pay that back. When I talked to Tracy the last time, we talked about negotiating how to pay that thirty-five thousand dollars loan back, five year loan, seven year loan, ten year loan. That would work. Now, having paid the interest, it could easily be done in a ten year loan, and money being saved. Well, no interest rates are going up now. Although I haven't seen all my savings.
Jacob, if we were to do this and use the LMI, is that what is LMI?
Yes.
Um, for the seventy-five hundred, how would that work? Like, what would that mean for us? Does she pay that back later, does?
Um, we, I mean, we have the option to give it as a, as a full grant from the LMI funds, if you want to, if, um,
Okay.
And the reason I would say that, rather than forgive the promissory mortgage, is because, um, a- anything, the money she paid back there will go into our general fund, but LMI funds are restricted for supporting low moderate income housing, so it makes sense that we have a project for that in front of us. We should use those funds, since we can't use them for other things.
And it's been sitting there forever.
Oh, for a while anyway.
So would we have, would we have stipulations on that, and if so, what would they do? So would we have, would we have stipulations on that, and if so, what would they do?
Gen- generally, I mean, by law, they ju- just, that they have to be used to benefit low moderate income people. We can add, you know, other, I mean, we can, we can put a timeline ourselves. I think, again, it works well in our case, just because there's already timeline on certain parts of the project already, there's verification of the low moderate income requirement from EC cog. That, that takes a little bit of the
burden off us.
Uh, administration of, of this, these funds off of our hands.
And I guess I don't feel eight months is a unreasonable, I mean, to think we need to ask, have it done sooner than that, I don't feel that's out of line.
And as Charlotte stated, though, she can get at that now, and the first apartment may be ready to rent two, three months, if everything, you know, can move forward, get on it, which will help everything.
What I see happening, if I get the LMI funds, what I would do is immediately turn that to the city. So if you just transfer from me, transfer back, you would have the money back immediately. I would do my own funds, my savings right now, because what I have to do is I have to do the project, send EC cog the receipts, and then make reimburse me. So then when I get reimbursed and I can go forward and just keep moving forward with that money that I get.
So
So initially, it would take some of my savings funds that I have in my personal fund, put it in there to start doing repairs.
So if the city's been paid back to seventy-five hundred, and she's got the rules under EC cog to go by, I do, we wouldn't have to add any more to it? I mean, do you think?
Why am I so confused then? It's my understanding, in order for you to get to ten thousand, the city has to forgive seventy-five hundred.
That's what EC cog is asking you to do.
Yes, so if we stand tall on the roughly ten thousand nine hundred dollars we agreed upon months ago, then you're not gonna get ten thousand dollars from.
Is it the ten thousand or the thirty-five thousand that you?
Thirty-five thousand is another grant.
Yeah, that's
Yeah, that's just the loan, I'm sorry.
The thirty, the thirty-five's the loan.
It's a loan, yes.
And that's, that's what they're saying is that she can't handle both payments.
The thirty-five and our ten-nine.
Our ten-nine?
So we need to forgive seventy-five or seventy-seven hundred, so the other ten thousand becomes available. That's the way I have interpreted this all along. So our ten-nine now becomes roughly thirty-two or thirty-five hundred.
We don't actually forgive it, though. We would have to write her a check.
Yeah.
And she would return it right away.
Right.
But she still pays the, like, thirty-two hundred.
I still pay the original fees of the three thousand, yes.
Whoever that is.
And I cannot use EC cog's money for that. So that will have to come out of my personal balance.
We entered into a good faith agreement months ago. This project, I don't think, has changed on your end. You still have the same vision you had since day one. And it's appearing to me that there's a money crunch to get this building back online with viable tenants. We still don't have a project plan in front of us up here. You're gonna redo the roof, you gotta get heat, water, uh, plumbing, electric, all that's gotta be in. And then you can start the interior renovations that would be necessary to get multiple tenants. Do you know the cost of the overall project?
At this point, no, I don't.
That's a concern of mine, because you don't know what this is gonna cost you. This could wind up costing six figures very easily.
Uh, I would hope not. The interior structure is sound.
So your interior is, how many possible renters would you be looking at? How many different units?
Two.
Two units, so all of the interior walls, got every insulation, everything on them they need? Paneling?
They're all plastered.
All, good to go.
Yes, except for, well, they need
The doors are demolished, but the interior walls are good.
The outside doors, outside doors are, the outside doors are fine.
I just, I've got more concerns now than I did day one. But in the end, you've gotta re- revamp, revitalize this building in order to become profitable for you.
So, right now, you just have the application in for this grant?
Yes.
So it's just, the balls are all kinda in the air whether you give it or not yet?
Well, some of it is depending on what the city does, and else, they will forgive the, which is seventy-five hundred.
I question whether or not we could make this contingent on if she gets the EC cog. But we can't because EC cog is making those contingent on whether or not we.
Well, we can, we can do that and say it's contingent on them do- finalizing it because they don't, one is not separate from the other. I mean, we can say it's contingent upon them, and then if they say no, we can back out. If they say yes, we can move forward.
Move forward and
Yeah, so
The weather now is the thing.
Right.
I understand Rod's point, that you're getting now if we don't get heat in there again.
This, this whole discuss, discussion initiated months ago. If the place needed a roof and new windows, why do we wait until the season's on our heels to react to it?
When did you get?
They needed a new roof five years ago.
I did not get possession of the building, it was not trans- title was not transferred until August of this year. I started this process in two thousand seventeen. I did a lot of background information, looking up to find out who owned the building, what was needed, how to go about acquiring abandoned property. Acquiring banned abandoned property is not a fast and easy thing to do. I had requested the city last fall, the city did not approve of the transfer until December, end of December of last year. That was when the city council gave permission to your city attorney to proceed to find out who owned the property. That in itself took sixty days. It was not started till the middle of January, which took me till the middle of March. Then, it had to be a court hearing, which wasn't until the end of April. Then a new title had to be drawn up, new abstract had to be drawn up because the old one was not around. So the abstract company took six weeks to come up with a new abstract. Took another month to get the title opinion on it. So I did not get the property until late middle of August, when the title was transferred to me. And because the property was not mine, there wasn't anything I could do about it.
Understand.
Things would move a little quicker, but unfortunately, that's the way things are.
Yeah.
Everything takes a while.
We started one just like this in July, start to finish, and they're, and they're renovating it already with the old hospital, so.
Oh, but we had already taken possession where the city owned it. This one, the city did not own yet. The city took possession of the hospital over a year ago, or about a year ago.
I, I agree, there's different, there's different factors and variables here.
Mm-hmm. That's a big difference.
There was a problem with one of the apartments in the abstract too, and the legal description, that was what held it up a bunch.
There was a problem because, like we said, there are three people who own this building. I did not know that there were two owners on the second floor.
Yeah.
There was a three-bedroom apartment in the back of those two, that was owned by key people.
I guess I'm okay if we can use LMI funding, get her going, if, however, I don't know, how do you write it up that we approve it pending EC cog funding? I mean, how would, Rich, how would you word that?
Well, I would put it contingent upon their approval of her application.
We approved to do it, and then when they do, you know.
But my question is, we're gonna be, what, about thirty-three thousand, three hundred dollars difference, give or take, or thirty-two hundred dollars difference between what we did the con- the contract for and what we're giving to her?
Oh, I thought she just said
Okay. The seventy-five hundred was to repay for the tuck pointing of the city debt. That's what EC cog and I are asking you to forgive. The other three thousand and some are the legal fees, which I will have to pay out of pocket, and that I agreed to do.
So, when you get that, everything's gonna be paid off with us, is what you're saying?
If I get the seventy-five hundred and then I pay for the legal fees, everything will be kosher with you.
Okay.
That's how I understood it.
Well, I di- I didn't know if we, when she was talking about paying out of pocket, it kind of worked into other items, so I wasn't sure where that, out of pocket, but, so we would be paid off at that point in time.
Derek, do you, I mean, you serve on that board at EC cog, I'm sure that was a conversation, I know they had a meeting last month on this. Is that where EC cog is, is, does it look like if we would go forward, they're gonna go forward?
That was my question, yes.
Cause that was my impression when they cornered me in the hall.
And we meet Thursday.
Yes.
So is that a first, Betty, on a
I'm going there, but I wanted to have, yes, yes it is, but I wanted to have the motion laid out.
We, we need clarity, at least I need clarity. This started at ten thousand nine hundred dollars. We are forgiving seventy-five hundred with no payment, no return. And you are gonna now have a, in a sense, a promissory note with the city for roughly thirty-four hundred, which started at ten-nine.
The promissory note wouldn't change at all. It would, it would stay in place.
Well, and
Betty's saying
Well, and the way it's being explained to me right now, the way I'm understanding this, is we're giving the seventy-five hundred, which she's in turn and paying back on the contract, and then the excess money, the thirty-four hundred, is coming out of her savings and paying us, and at that point in time, the contract will be paid off.
That's how I understood it.
Yeah.
That the seventy-five hundred's coming from LMI funding.
And then you would pay the thirty-four at the same time, so it would all be
Yeah, cause there's no penalty in the promissory note for paying it off.
So at that point, we're out of
Yeah, that's how I understood, yes.
Out of that.
Paying forward.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's exactly how I'm understanding.
Jacob, wouldn't, doesn't Charlotte have to prepare a
Right, uh, so I was hoping, I was hoping we would have a, at least a draft of, we, we, to use these LMI funds, we would have a separate agreement with Charlotte about those funds, and we can we can do it both ways, we can either provide it as a grant upfront, or we can also set up ours as a forgivable loan, so that basically, it's, it's a debt owed, and then we, we just forgive that debt, um, um, once she meets our terms of the, uh, agreement.
But you'd still have to move that LMI money though.
Forgiving debt doesn't sound to me like
I would say
I mean, yes, you would still, you would, you would make, you'd give the LMI funds.
Yeah, so you're not really forgiving it, you're giving her the money, and she's choosing to pay it back for this debt.
She's
And I see I see
That's, that's her choice.
Right, no, I understand that, I just, I'm just
From our end, we are providing a loan for low to moderate income, we've given her that seventy-five hundred dollars.
A grant, basically.
But, but it can be set up as a, however you wanna do it, but it can be set up as a loan, so it's owed until she meets those requirements, and then that's also forgiven at that point.
Gotcha.
Just, just to add more
Security.
Security to the funds.
Security. Security, yeah.
That's like a stipulation on the seventy-five hundred.
Yeah.
So you need a motion to give her the seventy-five hundred?
We, we still, again, again, um, I, we, before we can truly give the funds, we need to have this contract drawn up, and I, I just don't have that from our attorney yet.
So you could make a motion to have John
But, but if, but if you have the motion
Prepare that for seventy-five hundred.
Correct.
John.
Datters.
Not Amy.
Dorsey and Whitney.
Dorsey and Whitney, yeah, the provider, our law counsel.
Okay.
And Rod, yes, I have started working, I've started stripping paint and pulling out trash. You would fully be a master trasher?
Oh, you're right, I probably wouldn't believe it.
I would.
We, we sit here and listen to how the weather is gonna change, and that becomes the priority, and you don't have a bid for the roof yet.
Uh, part of the problem has been the rain. Uh, we haven't been able to get up there, we should be able to. I've been talking to, uh, guy who has the CBP piping, uh, they can do it in any type of weather.
I guess my, my concerns, my concerns are redundant, beans, the initial promissory note at ten-nine is gonna wind up being paid in full, just down a different avenue now. So, the city will receive the funds that we initially thought we would receive, sooner now than per the terms of the promissory.
So I can make a motion, I'm asking, follow me, cause I don't wanna do this ten times. Make a motion to grant Charlotte seventy-five hundred dollars from LMI pending, or have the attorney draw up the paperwork to
Motion to authorize the city administrator to contact the bonding attorney to, to a proposed agreement.
To do the paperwork for the seventy-five hundred dollars for Charlotte through LMI.
Contingent on
Pending they get
On their approval.
EC cog, cause it'll be nice if EC cog knows Thursday that we've done this. So that will help speed things too. Okay, did I say it right?
And if you, you said something about limitations, but if they're putting limitations on for low to moderate income, wouldn't that work?
Go off of EC cog's
I would think so.
I mean, they're the ones that are gonna have the bigger
Bigger stake.
Yeah.
And anything that we would put would be redundant, I would think.
Well, and there's no
Yeah, I, I think that's why it works well, just cause I mean, it's gonna be our time trying to verify things, um, you know, determining tenants.
Yeah.
And they're doing it all, like
And they do this every day, we are never gonna think of the stuff they have, yeah.
Yeah. They'll know.
Okay, is that a good motion?
Yep, that's a good motion.
Why don't you read that back to us, Tammy? I would like to hear Betty's motion.
Betty would like to hear her motion.
Is this a test?
Oh, boy, is it.
She was making notes.
Motion to authorize the city administrator to contact the bonding attorney to have them prepare a proposed agreement, um, granting LMI funding in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars to Charlotte Chekel.
Contingent on EC cog.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't know if you were getting into that contingent.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Contingent
We can do whatever we want. We can do whatever we want.
I know we can.
You come up here and do this.
I'm just making sure that EC cog.
Contingent on EC cog.
Approval.
Forgivable loan. Cause that's, it's the forgivable loan that we're talking about.
Is that what you wanted, Betty?
How's that sound, Betty?
That's awesome.
Sounds exactly what I heard coming out, alright, I'll second that.
Well, John already heard it.
John already heard it.
Before I read it, huh.
I was writing it down myself, cause I was very busy.
All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, carried. Seven point four, discussion, possible action on resolution setting date for public hearing on designation of twenty-eighteen animals of housing urban renewal area. And on urban renewal plan and project. Well, we gotta set that two weeks out.
Second meeting in November.
Second meeting?
Alright, so we'll put that as a second meeting in November.
Yeah, that's what he had on his.
At six P M.
November twenty-sixth, yeah.
November twelfth.
So moved, would you like a motion?
November forty-sixth. That's what he's got on the resolution, that's to give enough time.
Holy cow.
And I'll second Cody's.
First by Cody, second by Rich. Oh, and that's a roll vote.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty? Yes. Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Seven point five, discussion, impossible action on first reading of ordinance amending chapter seventy-four of the city code to change the definition of a permitted vehicle and prescribe new regulations for registration.
The goal here was to, uh. Offer the definition of a permitted vehicle enough to adapt to the changing industry, I guess, to allow larger U T Vs. But also to limit it, um, enough to not include a, a bunch of off-road type vehicles that we don't intend to.
So moved.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Rich. Any further discussion? And it's a roll vote.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Possible waiver on second and third reading? I had to ask.
Well, don't put it on that, I mean, you guys don't want it.
Okay, seven point six, discussion, possible action on first reading of ordinance amending chapter seventy-five of the city code to prescribe new regulations for reg registration.
Unless you guys have a different, uh, understanding than I did, uh, I wouldn't recommend approval on this. Because the snowmobiles and A T Vs are just restricted to use during, on, on unplowed streets, I, I just. Or you shouldn't be to an extent that. I think registration is worth our time, but.
So are, we don't need this ordinance then?
That would be my recommendation. I, when, when I, when we discussed this first, I did not realize that those vehicles were limited to.
Snow covered streets.
Snow covered streets.
Non-snow covered streets, yeah.
So we're just crossing this one off.
So, so that is, I mean, it's.
We already have a ordinance in place.
Your decision, I just.
Yeah.
So the.
All this would do is add registration.
Okay, so the U T, U T, U T Vs and the golf carts have to be registered to be on city streets.
Right, because they can be used year round.
But this, right, beans, this is snowmobiles, A T Vs can be.
A T Vs can only be used on unplowed, snow covered streets.
They can.
According to our current ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Just so people don't confuse the fact that you can bring a golf cart and U T V downtown, that you also cannot bring an A T V, correct?
Well, it's snow covered, correct.
Correct.
Alright, so.
That's what those ordinance currently stands.
And the U T Vs have to be registered?
According to, not, not, not yet, we passed the first reading, which added registration as well.
Okay.
They, they don't currently have a registration, but that was part of seven point five.
That was, okay.
That and golf carts, false.
Yeah.
U T Vs and golf carts are lumped together, and then A T Vs and snowmobiles are lumped together.
But snowmobiles run on sidewalks, or the, the grass?
Can't.
Not, not in town, they can't.
According to.
Can't work.
Legally, they're not supposed to be, no.
I'm sorry.
I thought the best word used was can't.
Can't.
So we're not doing anything with seven point six?
That's, unless you guys feel differently, but I, I think with them being limited to those. Winter months, and only when it's unplowed, which is a pretty short time period, our crews do a pretty good job.
So just soon leave the current ordinance for snowmobiles and A T Vs as it is written?
Yeah.
Alright.
Yep.
Alright.
No answer.
Seven point eight, public safety, seven point one, motion to approve a renewal of beer and liquor licenses, renewal of class C liquor licenses, outdoor service. With Sunday sale privileges, animals of bowling center.
So.
Second.
We wanna go home, don't worry.
Give it to Kay.
Kay?
First by Betty, second by Kay. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. B, renewal of class C liquor license and outdoor service, Tucker's Tavern.
So moved.
First by Rich.
Second.
Is this is listed as the way their current license is?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm gonna give that to John, he was just. All those in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Nine point oh, public works none, ten point oh, finance. Ten point one, discussion, possible action on resolution. Obligating funds for the re- urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment finance obligation, which shall come due in the. Next succeeding fiscal year for the animals of lodging suites LLC DBA American.
So moved.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Betty.
Is this their last, Kay, is this their last?
Yes, this will be for fiscal year nineteen-twenty, and it's twenty-five percent of the incremental value.
So this will be the end for the American?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Not the end, though.
Yeah, that sounded daunting.
And this, and this is a roll vote.
Betty?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Ten point two, discussion, possible action on resolution. Obligating funds for the urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment finance. Obligations which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year for fairway stores incorporated.
So moved, second.
First by Rich, second by Cody. And that two is a roll vote.
Rich?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Ten point three, discussion, possible action on the pay, payment of pay request number eleven in the amount of. Hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents to Colachi Construction for the water treatment plant expansion project.
So how, how far past are they on their expected completion date?
September first would be original, and then we offered to make it, uh, September twelfth or September eleventh.
Eleven. It was eleven business, eleven days.
Eleven days, so it would've made it September twelve, they actually declined that, cause they thought they deserved more, more days extension.
And how many more days do they think they're gonna need for completion?
But. It's, that's unclear, we're basic. Basically, we're between discussions, um. With H R Green, I think we're kind of, based on their current progress, we're prepared to kind of give it till December first before we change course on how we. Uh, a- approach the situation.
Was it the weather or what, that's three months?
It's a lot of things.
So if we change course, we're gonna have to spend a lot more money?
No, no, um. Just means that how the project is managed and, and. Uh, our relationship with the contractor will change. Essentially, we'll, we'll contact their, the bond, um.
Okay.
Their bond company, and they'll take over management of the project, cause now they're fiscally liable for it not being the contr- the contract.
So do you know if they've been paying their subcontractors?
Oh, they definitely, uh, uh, they have not, and that's the biggest concern with this payment, um. On one respect. Our liability is limited to the five percent retainage. But in the other, we know they're not paying their subs, we have already received one lead from one of the subcontractors. Saying they haven't been paid, um, and we know there's others that have verbally communicated that.
Mm-hmm.
So. While the work for this pay request has been by the engineers confirmed as complete. In some respect, knowing that the subs haven't been paid. It's almost like an overpayment, because they're being paid but not paying their bills. They're, they're holding on to those funds and not paying subs for whatever reason, that's unclear, but.
Can we legally retain more than the five percent out of this payment? And we'll pull it for the subs?
Can we table this and advise the attorney into it?
I, I. I, I think it would be wise to hold off on this payment and discuss more with, with attorneys on. On what best course to be. The only, they, I mean, it's, it's a bad situation being, cause on one hand, they've been saying along we haven't been paying them, which is inaccurate, but, um. By delaying this, they didn't have a little bit of footing in what they're saying, but.
But if, but if they're not paying the people that are subcontracting this stuff, it needs to be rectified.
We've already got one mechanic's lien, we're gonna add more, potentially. Do you want a motion to table this?
Pending attorney advisement?
This sum of one sixty-six, seven eighty-six and change. What this is tabbed for as far as the phase of the project is complete, and in a sense, we do O'Colochi. This money, uh, whether they've paid their subs or not, this phase of the project is complete, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
But are they putting mechanics lien against the city?
Or does this one sixty-six, seven eighty-six go to pay the subs?
Well, they haven't been paying them up to this point.
Same, we're, we're gonna withhold a payment, and the subs aren't gonna get paid.
For two weeks, or.
Well, and that, that's the thing, is that, yeah, it's both sides of it, on one hand, yes, this money could theoretically go to help PM, but on the other hand.
I agree.
They should, it's not, the, this set of funds is for this amount of work that is just complete. Money for prior pay requests have not been going to subs, it's not just this pay request. And, and we've been sitting on this pay request for a while, not, uh, at the engineer's level, not, not from our end, they did not meet the contractual obligations to provide paperwork. Um, that is necessary for our contract, because we are getting CBD, CDBG funds.
They need.
We have to meet, uh, American administrative seal requirements, and they weren't providing documentation to verify that.
American.
That's where they held up this pay request for, I, I'm not sure how long.
It'd be three, three weeks, towards that session.
If, if we, if we even table this for two weeks.
Three weeks.
Three weeks, yes. Uh, what's to say that there's no activity at the site for three weeks?
I, I, you don't know.
I, I believe that's, we need to be taking all of that under consideration.
There's a.
With this line item ten point three.
All the, there had to be lien waivers provided to by the subs. At the end of the project, it says they were paid, but obviously, if that isn't taking care of the bond.
Through the bond, the angel.
The bond will, what, what it's for is.
Yes, but fortunately, but fortunately.
Performance bond, and you didn't perform, so now we collect from the bonding company? Or the subcontractors would collect from the bonding company?
I mean, the last thing I wanna do is issue this check. That it just kinda in a sense goes right out of town and doesn't pay anybody that's got, uh, subs, that's got money coming to him.
But the flip side appeal.
The last thing I don't, I wanna do is cut it off too.
Yeah.
Just wanted to say the status of the water plant right now is, we're at a kind of a critical time. Uh, new filters are coming online, and I don't disagree with your, your comment at all. Um, I've been through this, I, it drives me crazy just while we're going through this contract with the new one. If this was to happen a month ago, I wouldn't have a problem with that, because we were trying to get one set working versus bringing on the, the new one. So if we put a halt to it, to be honest with you, I would put a halt to it right here and now, before we go into the area of getting to the critical part of having two weeks. Into having, um. Computer work done, getting in between, and then all of a sudden contractors decide to go away, if that was, if that was the case. Um, and then we're caught in the middle of having actuators not working correctly or anything like that, driving us into political territory. So I just wanted to add that to you.
If the subs are gonna walk away, they'll wa- they could walk away tomorrow or two weeks from now.
That's the, that's the thing.
So we're, we're not gaining anything with the subs.
As long as I don't get in between that point, it puts our talent into a critical situation, that's it. And I'm, it's like right now, if I was to say, okay, this is how it's gonna be, and they turn around and say, okay, we're gonna walk off the job. I would have it done right now instead of a week from now, cause next week, we're gonna start scheduling everybody to, their schedule to come in to do the program. And that's a very critical part of this work, and getting it up in, I just don't wanna see somebody up and going and saying, okay, we get the check, I'm out here. And that has happened already with the piping company being there, I got notification on a Friday, Monday, they're not gonna show up.
Because they haven't been paid.
And that's just from our job, from other jobs, this has nothing to do with us. And this is the very upsetting part about this project, is that we're, we're not in the middle of it, it's because they haven't paid the contractors prior to their jobs. Of animal, or the job of anything, so. I just wanted to make sure you knew where we were and where we sat in, in this project and what, what stage we're at. Right now, this is that very different situation, we're coming up on winter time, I have no heating plant. I got problems with, uh, the gas meter was installed, I have to have piping replaced in between before we can have gas running in, and people have. Very exciting, that's what's going on, I'm very nerve wracking.
You're saying, right now may not be a, a critical time, when is a critical time again?
Next two weeks, that's what it's gonna be, if we get in between that area right now, I'm relying on the original alters. And the filters are running, I don't have a problem with that, if you start getting into this one, we're. And the filters are running, I don't have a problem with that, if you start getting into this one, we're, we're going in between where we're gonna have. Uh, people coming in to do the programming on the, on the actuators, which is the on and off of every valve, that's gonna be on new filters. If we start having problems with that, contractors don't show up, and we have problems in the plant, that's gonna be very rough, and what we have to do to better than that. Along with the schooling we have to take on these actuators just to make them not, they're, it's an intricate part of the, of the plan.
So you said given till December first, is that what you said, why would you go this way?
That's the date, uh, that we've discussed with the engineers to try to give them to reach substantial completion before we. Uh, take it up for, before we contact the bond company.
Right now, I don't know what the status is on the contractors, it's none of my business, all I do is hear it from one to the other every day.
Oh, I'm not hearing, I hear it.
I'm hoping every day that these guys get paid and they can continue on with with the job. Alright, any more questions?
We're thirty days behind right now.
Right.
Roughly. So if we don't pay and Colachi themselves walk off, we're gonna be, it's gonna rack up real quick.
And that's been my nightmare since.
Your your two weeks critical time is gonna come and go with no activity on the job site.
Yeah, I, I wanted to get to this point where we have these online, and we get to our substantial coverage of this plant, and then worry about things afterwards, but we're right in the middle of that critical area of water plant.
So do you feel this December first date is a reasonable completion date?
I don't think they make it.
Do you think they can do it?
There's just too many other things left to do after that, they're gonna, after, we just, today, we just got pressure testing down on the new filters. After this is gonna, they gotta go all the way over to the existing filters, pull the stand out of those, give it there, redo the, um, the diffusers. And to me, it's just the way things have been going ever since this plant started, when this project started, and it's probably been, been, been. So, once they transfer something there, I don't want them making it to that, on a giant collage, he said he would in a meeting, that we had with Doc Henry, and then he picked that up. So, all I can say is, keep the engineers' heads, and that's, that's what I mean.
So in that meeting, did he say anything about his subs?
Yeah, he, uh, he talked about how, um, he would look into this because he was not aware of all of this with that. And he is supposed to show up on the meeting, which Jacob, that's gonna be Friday at nine o'clock, the construction meeting is coming up. We'll get, I think between Jacob and I, we'll get a better idea of where he stands. But he's, did feel that he was a little shocked at some of the things that had been going on on this job, but I think there was a little bit of politics to it. So, I, I don't know the gentleman myself that well, but I've done it on that track this week, but I don't. Oh, if you, maybe put yourself in my position on this, on this, uh, pipe project, I had just been aware of from the time that it was at those times for months. That filters didn't show up, filters were a month late, um, I go, I know they had the piping, I was there, valves didn't show up, critical valves to keep them working. After that, it was like, we're not gonna be there on Friday because the contractors do have plans. And every day, there's gonna be something new, and I do have most everything I do. Any more questions? Excuse my voice, it's all about this.
Document, 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 that is what he, good job.
Absolutely, if there's anything you need, go free, come to a plant.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
So, so make this payment in hopes that. Well, we can always fall back to the bonding company if they don't.
I'm on the fence, I'd be happy either way.
You knew they were gonna pay, for sure, and like Rod said, if you don't, then they totally pull out.
They've already been paid one point five million of their total one point eight contract.
Where does their obligation fall with the subcontractors?
Our obligation? From what I understand, it's, it's limited to that five percent of the, the project, total project. So even.
Do you have any idea how much is owed Jacob or Jim?
To the subs, I.
I just wondered how much they have shorted them.
Is this the only project we have them on right now?
Colachi, yes.
Yes, okay.
Did, um. You said H R Green was sitting on this for thirty days?
I am not sure exactly how long, but they were, they were sitting on it for a while because we weren't getting documentation we needed.
So did they make a recommendation to make this payment then?
They did, but, uh. Again, they kind of explained, there's, there's the. It it's just a bad situation on either, either end, yes, they they believe the work has been completed to this point, but with. With the situation where the s- uh, subs not being paid. There's.
Have they come and inspected it?
They they should be inspecting it on a, I don't know how often, period.
H R Green?
Yeah.
Yeah, they should be there, they should be there.
Are they coming in?
Yeah, they have the engineers here, they have all the last week, the worse this job has been getting, the more the engineers have been showing up.
And how much is gonna be owed upon completion? Do we know?
Eighty, right, right now, the five per, the retainage?
No, just, just the completion after this, if we make this payment, how much is left on the projected project for payment?
Oh. A hun- a hundred and ninety-one thousand, including the eighty some thousand in retainage at this point.
So, at that stage upon completion, we could withhold that final payment. If we needed to.
Till all of your ones paid.
So go ahead and pay this one, in the meantime, talk to the attorney, find out, and then.
Yeah. And then on this final payment, then we can start doing whatever we gotta do.
Good idea.
If if we need to pay the subs out of what we've got left or.
I, that gets, yeah.
Yeah, we don't do that though.
No.
I don't, it'll, it'll come from the bonding.
Against the bonding attorney.
Yeah.
The bond will do the.
That's a company. Isn't that under the performance by?
Yeah, that's part of their performance bond.
But.
So if there's no lien waivers about the subs.
We don't, we we don't release the retainage.
Yes.
Right, and if it still isn't met by that, from what I understand, then the bond.
So I'll make the motion to make this payment.
Second.
First by Rich, second by Betty to make this.
I'm not saying that we may not have ground to stand on by halting this payment. But contractual obligations between the city and H and R slash Colachi have been fulfilled to an acceptable level, correct?
That, that's, that's, we're told by H R Green.
The work's done and acceptable.
That's why I asked if the engineer's been there going spot.
John Colachi wasn't informed by at that meeting that if by November thirty first or, um, in December, at December first. That the bondsman would be notified, and he was well aware of that, and that, so he was very stern on that, so.
Well, as long as we're discussing this project, I would very much appreciate Jacob if, uh. When you're meeting on Friday, we squeeze and pressure. Because some people need to step up and fulfill. This overall project, do, all you gotta do is do s- do what you say you were gonna do, and all parties should be happy.
Yeah, uh. I, I guess from my perspective, I think H R Green's done a good job of of putting the pressure on, on Colachi, but. They've also bucked it quite a bit, um, I, even before we passed substantial completion, we had letters. To, to Colachi to change project managers on their end, and all sorts of things, just because of the, the lack of work that had been done, and. And and he, I mean, the frustrating part for me is, is, uh, John Colachi received those, those, that letter. Tried to negate everything that we had informed him of, saying that that's not true, and come up with an excuse for everything, and then we come to this meeting, I don't know. Couple, not even really a week ago.
Yeah.
Uh, between, between John and and, uh, our engineer, and and he tries to act like he wasn't aware of a lot of these problems, well, he's been informed of these problems, and he he ignored it. So. I, I mean. I, I hope they, I mean, we'll continue to put the pressure and and I hope they follow through.
Alrighty, I got, I got a first and second, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
I spoke my piece.
Yes.
Opposed, carried. Ten point four, discussion and possible action on the payment of bills for the month of October.
Some move.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Rich. Any discussion?
I wondered on that six two three six nine, the middle school or prepare on Walworth, how did the city end up paying a third of it? I mean, I thought we were informed that was a school from draining their boilers caused it, and I just wondered what happened there.
There was, uh. Discussion about. Um. What our proportion was, um, I mean, there definitely was, from what, from what I could tell, there's definitely damage done by, uh. During, during the sewer project on Walworth. Um. Personally, I don't think it was thirty-five percent of, of the panels that were damaged by that, but.
Wasn't that the other side of the road?
It was the other side of the road, it was, it was equipment driven on top of it by our contractor.
I was gonna say.
Why were they dragging on it?
That I can't, I can't answer.
That does not make.
On the sidewalk?
Was that with the school though? I mean, where did that come from?
I think we, I think we had.
Where the school was.
Greg had pictures of it, there's tracks.
I think we had pictures of the equipment on, on the sidewalk.
They originally asked for forty-three percent.
Sure.
Um. I, 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 I think that was more than the damage done, but, uh, I felt in discussing with them. That, that was kind of. The, the best reasonable, uh, amount we could come to.
Well, and there was probably more damage done from years of neglecting that anyway. I mean, because you kind of had.
Well, it was, but it was still the school, but why did they drag on, that's an interesting question, I just wonder why they had to be clear on the site.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
It, it, it doesn't make sense, but.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, carried. Eleven point O, city administrators report.
Getting back to water, picking up that. Uh, we've got our second scheduled shutdown tomorrow, actually, they'll be switching some piping over between the old. Part of the plant to the new plant so that we can start the two, two week test of the new filters. Um, so I don't think the shutdown's expected to be very long, but that will happen tomorrow, um.
So are, can I ask, are customers gonna, are they gonna be without water, or are we just available quantity as more?
So, so my understanding is the towers will be filled prior to the shutdown, so we'll just be, during the shutdown, we'll be limited to that capacity, but we shouldn't have any problem.
I was just in case customers call or whatever.
People not using hydrants and.
Yeah, so.
Right, right.
And fire department too, to call out for water instead of.
Yep.
So assuming, I think, normal usage, there shouldn't be an issue, um.
Okay, just curious in case people call.
Right, um. We should be, there should be no issue having the plant back online by the end of the year. That's.
You know, you're just law, but I think we're good, it's not, it's not a major.
Right. That's, that's the plan anyway. Um. As we noted, there's constru- construction progress being out Friday, so hopefully we, we have some progress to discuss. Uh, other thing, just, um, to make note of. How does that get? Did we verify the date on that, I just took Linda's word on the date.
Yes, I'm, yeah, yeah, I'm.
The sweep rate is the twenty-fourth?
Yep, it's this Wednesday.
Um. So there's no official street closure, but that does go across that intersection of Scott and Main with the kids in the costumes, so. They're all, that's basically just blocked off by the police, so for everybody's awareness.
It's turned over in ten minutes.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty short.
It's short.
Short and sweet.
So that's taking place twenty-fourth at five thirty. And also, we've got a racquetball league starting up in November, also, I, they may be available now, but if they're not, they'll, they'll be available, student, the gym, McDonough tickets, um.
They were in the paper last week.
Okay, that performance is December first, is that right? I believe that's, I believe the performance is December first, and, uh, for both those items, uh. Public can contact the park director. That's all I've got.
Okay. Twelve point O, mayor and council reports on boards and commissions.
Uh, Weber Stone would just, uh, like council to know that they have a roof on the hospital. And, um, they're expanding the north parking lot, and, um. Secured the building.
What could they, what'd you say about the parking lot?
It's, they're expanding the parking lot to the north. So.
What do they park now?
Just, just more space. They have rock to get rid of. Place to dump it.
I'll say, I'll say that next, we're just waiting to pave, so I'll hurry to pave it.
No.
No, not at this point, I don't think.
There are other places to pave, I gotta see what.
Okay. So he wanted, uh, that passed along.
So that's.
That's exciting.
That's it on boards and commissions. We'll move on to thirteen point O, public with business with accounts on items not on the agenda.
Hello again, everyone, my name is Nicole Fosson, I was in front of you, if you will recall, a couple of months ago. Um, and floated the idea, uh, to you all about, um, fundraising for a pavilion in Riverside Cemetery. And at that time, I told you I would be back, um, once I received your blessing, that it was okay thing for me to continue to look into. So I'm back, um, after some more work with some drawings, a very primitive one, but this is a very primitive structure. One short, so if you guys have any time, sharing somehow.
We can share.
Thank you.
Do you need one?
So, I, um, worked with Jeff Vanowitz, um, here in town, and I asked, I, I made a couple of requests of him. Uh, one was that this be a low maintenance, uh, structure, um, I asked him to draw something that was very simple, uh, nothing fancy, but. Yet was gonna have a nice appearance. Um, I asked him also to be cost conscious for me, knowing that, uh, this was gonna be a, a fundraising effort, and, um. So th- this is what he has provided to me, you will see it is a structure that is. At a lunam roof, um. at a aluminum roof, um, and basically just four wood, wooded, uh, wood posts that are treated, um. He included a breakdown for me of his estimate, uh, the price that he quoted me was sixty-eight hundred dollars, which is a little higher. I had hoped in my mind, without any, you know, without any idea where this would be, I'd hoped that it would be more in the five thousand dollar range. But I'm not too discouraged. I think it's still possible. Um, it is, it's definitely possible. I'm not gonna say that it's, uh, make, it, it, it's a little daunting, but it's not impossible. I, I'm still very committed to get this done. I just wanted, again, to touch base with you, um, wanna make sure that the council thinks that this is a, um, you know, eye pleasing structure before we go forward with any fundraising. If there are any, you know, issues with construction or materials, um, hopefully at this early point, we can kind of get those concerns aired. Um, I am definitely not a construction person. I am trusting Jeff, um, you know, completely that he gave me, uh, the essentials for getting this done. Um, he did tell me that lumber is going down, the price of lumber's going down. So he thought that this estimate was generous. But again, I am not, I, I don't think that that should be any concern of yours. It was, it's basically, I think I'm here just to make sure that the appearance of this structure is something that you all think is favorable.
Do you have a color picked out for the steel roof thing?
No, um, I noticed on his quote that it says color, but there's no color designated. So, you know, again, aesthetically, I'm very willing to have you guys make those decisions if you want to. It would just be a light color. In my mind, I would think very light color.
Like, yeah.
Again, low maintenance. You went with aluminum because I thought that that would be, but I don't know why. Just to follow in the city as far as upkeep or years, um...
Pick an earth tone, we don't care.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, earth tone.
And again, I would fall, you know, I would definitely defer to, to Jeff's opinion on those things too. Just real simple, just to really serve the purpose of keeping that sun off of those presenters at the memorial day. Praise, also offering some covering, you know, for families, um, as they gather in the cemetery. So.
Do we need to put this on the agenda for next meeting to discuss it?
We really ought, we really ought to. It's, they're, they're, fortunately shouldn't be out of the procession on, on an item. Not on the agenda. Um...
Good, we approved her to do it, right? As a fundraiser. What, what was our motion for? What'd we do?
My understanding was just, I, I came to, um, the first time just with an idea and if you were favorable to that idea, I would continue to progress. So that's what I, your idea is to do whatever you want me to do.
There wasn't any official, no, should I think she just did it in this part of the...
Let's have it put on the agenda as an action item so that...
For two weeks from now, or three years?
Three weeks, yeah.
Yeah, we can put it on our next agenda.
That's, that's real. I, I would just ask them on the school, um, school board, I think we have a meeting that's anyway, so if I could be... We have a meeting at seven always, to think there's some, always some issue about...
Sure, yeah, I...
Yeah, if you're listed on the agenda, you can, they can put you on the agenda. Community better area.
Put you towards the top.
First.
We'll push you up.
I appreciate you not asking me to defend that thirty-three percent request of the school age.
The thirty-five percent?
Was it thirty-five or thirty-one percent?
Uh, Nicole does call out a steel roof, not aluminum.
Um, okay. Oh, you're right, steel roofing, too.
Aluminum would be probably the...
Again, if I need to bring Jeff with me, that's something I, I, you know, do you think...
Aluminum would be the side soffits and he's, he's clarifying that in the, in the itemization part of it. He does list, uh, some colors for the, uh, which appears to be the roof as well.
You know, I think this would be used not only for the events, say, having the cemetery, but people that will gather before and after families meet there.
My, my only question would be on the, the labor aspect.
Labor's not included in this quote. And again, that would be something that I would hope to have deleted. I have, I have some ideas in my mind, um, don't, you know, I'm not gonna ask people before I know this is a done deal, but it's, I think, a couple of different groups in town that I could get home. But if not, you have to raise the money, I guess. Jeff, Jeff would help me with construction. I had that talk with him. Um, you know, if, if, when you discuss this, if you think that there's something else that I can be helpful with, let me know in advance. Like I said, I'm not a construction person, so if you're gonna have specific questions about that, I'll get Jeff to come with me. All right?
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Nikki.
Fourteen point O, adjournment.
Second.
First by Cody, second by Rich. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
See you in three weeks.
Thank you, everybody. My name's Q T P.